Welcome everyone.
Wait, wait just one second. It's got a delay. It will start. Okay.
Welcome everyone to our first virtual board of education meeting for Transylvania County. Following Governor Cooper's guidelines and the advice that also we have been advised by our attorney, it seemed appropriate that we as a board of education would join our teachers, staff, parents, students, everyone that is having virtual learning and virtual instruction and now we are going to have a virtual meeting following the guidelines that have been given to us by our governor. But we're going to follow our typical agenda and we're going to begin the meeting with a time of cation or silence and then we're going to follow that with the pledge allegiance to not being the way we are going to lead us into those. I would ask that you join me for a moment of silence or prayer, reflection, whatever you feel appropriate. And tonight, the thing that we of course want to focus on is all those that have been affected by the COVID-19 virus. And we also, that includes our students, our teachers, our staff, parents and grandparents, all those that we love and care so much about in our system. Also, let's particularly remember anyone whose family member has tested positive for the virus or who is suffering from the virus. You would join me for just a moment of prayer or silence reflection. Amen. And thank you. And now I'm going to lead us in the pledge. If you would join me for that. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice to all.
Thank you. And then I will call our meeting to order. And welcome everyone, like I said, to our new virtual meeting. Wanted to say just a couple of things and I'm sure Dr. McDarris will follow up with some others, but want to say thank you to Chris Whitlock and his IT team for getting this going for us, for all staff members and administrators that were involved in the process of setting this meeting up. And I can't start the meeting without saying thank you and how much the board of education appreciates all our teachers, our staff, parents, grandparents, students, and how you have embraced this new world of virtual learning. And that's, like I say, going to be joining this virtual world. I want to remind everybody that's on with us virtually that you speak clearly. I'll speak one at a time. Jenny is taking notes, so she needs to be able to hear us. And just anyone that's watching from the public and us, just be patient as we work our way through this. And listen. The first item of business would be approval of the agenda. Dr. McDarris, do you have any modifications?
I do not have any modifications. The board members will need to unmute for a vote.
Yes. Any board member have a modification to the agenda?
No.
If not, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Some.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please speak and say aye.
Aye.
I think that passed unanimously. That will bring us up to a time of public comment. Our public comment was submitted as we posted when our what was published to Jenny. And Dr. McDarris has that public comment and he's going to read that list.
Thank you. We received two public comments. The first one was from Crystal Holland. She stated, "I would like to thank our board administrators and technology specialists for the incredible support and systems you have put in place to ensure Transylvania County students have access to quality education. From having the vision to fund the needed technology to our on-site technology specialists creating individual login cards for students, you've all done an incredible job. I am so grateful to be part of this amazing system." Then we have a public comment from Eric E. Moss. Dr. E. Moss submitted a comment. "Hope and assume this note finds you and your families well. With regards to my intent to present a letter of concern regarding school health nurse staffing," he wants to convey this to the board in public comment. His intent request is to have a submitted letter petition presented and read into the minutes. We do, we did receive copies of signature sheets from Dr. E. Moss. Dr. E. Moss states, "I would like to strongly recommend that the board and county commissioners fill one additional school health nurse role immediately and commit related funding until the state corrects their error in accounting on the number of general duty nurses. Current circumstances and need for oversight when school resumes provides ample justification for this critical need. Also, I believe there is value in an idea discussed about forming a small task force to evaluate all roles immediately related to student health, such as school health nurses, counselors, and ciliary health services. Out of the normal budget process and recommend a long-term staffing plan to the board and commissioners. Understand that this will need to be postponed for at least six months." And those are the only two public comments that we have. We thank those two for submitting their comments.
Which will bring us to good news.
Yes, that will bring us to the good news report. Let me pull that up here. This one's second. "Transylvania County Schools, School Nutrition and Local Restaurants Bridging the Gap. During the coronavirus crisis, many groups have responded rapidly to help local families fill the gaps while schools are closed. The Transylvania County School Nutrition Department has switched operations to its summer feeding mode in order to deliver meals to children throughout the county. School bus drivers are transporting food daily. Backpack buddies, food packs are being delivered by school resource officers. Many local restaurants have also stepped up, including Pescato's Burritos, Country Skillet, Grill at the Bar, Roosterhead Plantation, Jet's Pizza, The Barbecue Shed, Creekside Market, Villa Amato, and others are all providing or have provided free meals or food items. These are for our children each day while the schools are closed. In addition, Lake Talksway Charities has donated $10,000 to the local school nutrition program. We thank these community heroes for their support. Thank you very much for that. I think we're averaging around 1,000 meals a day, and that's been going strong. Congratulations to Brevard High Senior Graham Phillips, who has been awarded the prestigious Morehead Kane Scholarship as a member of the UNC Chapel Hill class of 2024. The Morehead Kane Scholarship provides a fully funded educational experience with four years of undergraduate study and summer enrichment experiences. Congratulations to Graham. Levine Scholarship. Brevard High School Senior Jolene Osteen has been awarded the prestigious Levine Scholarship as a member of the UNC Charlotte class of 2024. Levine Scholarship Program provides a fully funded educational experience with four years of undergraduate study and a stipend to create and sustain a community service initiative. Congratulations to Jolene. The 2020 Time North Carolina Student Academy of Science results. Transylvania County Schools Time for Real Science students participated in the first ever online North Carolina Student Academy of Science competition held via Zoom on Friday, March 27th, a response to COVID-19. Students submitted their research papers ahead of time and then presented their papers online. We have a number of students that we have congratulations for. They placed at the state level. And also, congratulations to outgoing NCSAS student president, Fritsch Rupert. You can see some of these names here that have won the awards. Very proud of those students. They worked very hard. And presenting online was not ideal for them because I think they, they really are just incredibly good presenters and good speakers, but they did an outstanding job with the online. So congratulations to all of our student winners. Kindergarten registration for the 2020-2021 school year is now open in all of our elementary schools. Starting school is an exciting experience for young children. We want to be sure it is a positive one. All children who will be five years old, older before August 31st, are eligible to start kindergarten this fall. Please visit our website, tcsnc.org/k for forms and more information. April 6th through 10th is National Assistant Principals Week. The National Association of Elementary School Principals and the American Federation of School Administrators invite all to honor and recognize the contributions of assistant principals to the success of students in schools across the United States. We appreciate all the talent and dedication of our assistant principals every day of the year. And they've been working very hard lately. Public School Volunteer Week. Public School Volunteer Week is April 20th through 24th. Provides a yearly opportunity for schools and families to honor the dedicated volunteers whose contributions support student success. To the parents, grandparents, and community members whose experience, expertise, and passion make a difference in the lives of children every day, we say thank you for all that you do. March was National Music in Our Schools Month in a time to support the educators, students, and programs that make all of the concerts and performances possible. Not only does music enhance our lives, but learning to sing, read music, or play an instrument stimulates the brain and improves all areas of academia. At a time when many school music programs are facing academic or budget cuts, we continue to support our music and arts programs. Please join us in celebrating music educators for all they do to enrich learning and bring music into our lives. It's interesting that tomorrow would have been our all-county chorus concert, which is always outstanding, but this year we've had to put that off, of course. National Social Workers Month. Celebrated each March, National Professional Social Work Month is an opportunity to recognize the important contributions of school social workers in providing services to children in need. This year's theme, "Social Workers: Generation Strong," pays tribute to the many roles filled by these hardworking individuals. Whether serving as advocates, advisors, counselors, or facilitators, school social workers provide services in crisis situations and help guide children through obstacles and uncertainty. They also help students gain the social, emotional understanding needed to find academic success and positive strategies for life. We appreciate the work of school social workers and thank them for all they do. This is just one example of what's been going on in our schools as we try to have our meetings. And this was titled "Getting the Band Back Together," but this was the Brevard High School Faculty Meeting on Monday today. And you can see this is how this is working. We would like to see everyone in person, but everyone's been doing the same. We have similar pictures from Rosman and others. Thank you to all of our art teachers for sharing student artwork here in the boardroom during the year. And we thank the Transylvania County Sheriff's Office, who's one of our great partners, and our SRO Division for securing our board members. We thank Officer Hall for being our SRO here this evening. As always, we invite the public to stay up to date. You have a plethora of social outlets to be able to see what's going on in Transylvania County Schools, social media, and we hope that you continue to visit those to stay up to date on what's going on in Transylvania County Schools. That is our good news report for this meeting. That brings us up to former students in the military. The board wishes to thank the former students from Brevard High School, Rosman High School, and Davidson River School who are currently serving or have previously served in the US military. We have a list of names that is recognized at every meeting and it is read aloud twice a year in recognition of Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Additional names are included as they are received. And we have a very long list. I will pull that up. And what once started with one page with some open space is now filled up two full spaces, two full pages, excuse me. And we thank all those who have served and those who submit the names. That brings us up to the consent agenda.
Before we move into consent agenda, will everybody just let me know that they're hearing the meeting and I'll, Courtney sent me a message that her internet flickered and she missed a little bit. So before we get to anything we vote on, I want to be sure everybody's hearing everything.
Yes, I can hear just fine.
I can hear just fine.
I can hear just fine as well. Yes, I'm fine.
Will you back? Courtney, are you in?
Yes, I can hear. It was just going out just a little bit. Like I said, I made sure that my family is off the internet because we have very spotty internet up here. So, but we should be good then. I can hear.
Okay. I'll be sure. So that brings you to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda items for tonight are minutes from our Federation of Senate meeting on March 2nd meeting and the personnel report for tonight. Is there any discussion around that? Someone had an opportunity to look at it?
I looked at it.
Yes.
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 To approve the consent agenda items.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Seconds.
Motion's been made and qualified as seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. That now brings us up to E-Rate Technology Purchase. Director Chris Whitlock will present a request to approve the purchase of technology equipment for the 2020-2021 year. Transylvania County Schools will purchase network switches for installation this summer. Mr. Whitlock anticipates a cost of approximately $230,000. Of this, 80% will be covered by E-Rate funds and the other 20% will be covered by state funding. No local funds will be used for the purchase. Board approval is required for purchases in excess of $90,000. The deadline for approval is April 29th. Mr. Whitlock will answer any questions board members may have. And we did receive a quote from Applied Learning Consulting Group. It is attached. I will pull that up. And I will turn it over to Mr. Whitlock.
Dr. McDarris, if you could scroll to the very end of that document, all the way to page 16, there is a summary there that pretty much summarizes all 16 pages.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. That's it. So Dr. McDarris said the total purchase with tax comes to $230,224.59. And you can see the breakdown of schools there. And we're purchasing network switches, which is the backbone and the core of our computer network. And that provides both our wireless and our wired network. So this is the fundamental core of our network with some newer and faster equipment. As Dr. McDarris said, there is federal FCC E-Rate funding available and our free and reduced numbers qualify us for 80% funding from E-Rate, from the FCC. And there, the other 20% is made up from funds supplied out of state funding from the General Assembly and DPI. So of that $230,000, there is $0 of local funding that is needed.
All right, Chris, is this the only firm that submitted a proposal?
Yes, sir. We are using a North Carolina DPI contract and bid. And this proposal went out to a very lengthy list of vendors. And this was the only vendor that responded to our quote.
And is their quote within the range that you expected it to be?
It is a little less than I expected it to be. So that was good news.
And I guess one final question for me. When would the installation of this new equipment take place?
We're hoping for summer.
Other questions from board members? I'm going to make a motion that we approve the purchase of network technology from Applied Learning Consulting Group in the amount of $230,224.59 for the 2021 school year. Is there a second?
I have, I have one quick question, real quick question before we vote. Chris, why, why is there only one? I thought, you know, we were supposed to have more than bid somewhere along the line, state contracts, things like that. Just why did that happen?
I don't really know. Like I said, this was sent, I can pull up the exact number here, but this was sent to a rather lengthy list of vendors. Let me give you a number here, Mr. Griffin. This was sent to 24 different vendors that have approved on the DPI state contract. And we did specify, of those 24 different vendors, there are several different brands of equipment. We have standardized with HP Aruba switches. And that's what our technicians are familiar with. So we did say in the proposal that we preferred HP Aruba or equivalent. So we didn't have to retrain and manage multiple consoles. And this was the only vendor that submitted a proposal at all of those 20 some vendors that this was sent to.
Well, you know, oftentimes people ask why we just add one bid. And I'd just like to be able to tell them that that's the business with us.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
And Chris, are you comfortable with this firm?
Yes, ma'am. We've done business with this company before. The last round of switches that we purchased via E-Rate about five years ago or so, we purchased the switches from AENS. So we do have prior experience with this vendor.
And Chris, this is Chris Campbell. I believe you said they're on state contract as an approved vendor?
Yes, sir. They are on the state contract for E-Rate DPI purchases on DPI.
Okay. And that pretty much, Mr. Griffin, too, if folks ask, the state prequalifies these folks on a state contract that we can piggyback on. And the need for consistency of the technology a lot of times does result in very few bids because we're asking for specific consistent technology. So all of that is very standard in the technology world.
If not, there's a motion made, qualified as seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please. Aye. That's unanimously settled.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlock. And also, I wanted to mention, I apologize. I did not mention that our attorneys are with us virtually as well. Campbell Shatley, Chris Campbell, thank you for being with us, Chris. I'm used to seeing him over here to my left. You're right on the screen. And so I overlooked you. I apologize for that. That brings us to curriculum update. Curriculum Director Miss Ellenberger will give an update on curriculum and instruction. I will pull her document up and you may need to tell me when to go to the next slide.
Okay, will do. So this presentation definitely took a different turn as we moved to online learning and some of the updates became more relevant and some others not so much. So just stop me at any point in time if you have questions or if you have questions at the end. So let's go to the next slide, Dr. McDarris. Several, a couple of months ago, I was asked, Ms. Welborn, I think you asked about what are all the state assessments that our kids have to, our students have to take. And so I laid it out in this chart. And I don't think I missed anything, although it's possible I didn't put, you know, the AP testing and Singleton assessments on there. But you get a good look at all the things that are expected of our students. And it, it looks a bit overwhelming, especially when I look at the expectations for third grade. That being said, we know that our North Carolina final exams in middle school and high school are going away. We will not have those next year. We don't know yet what is replacing that, but we do know that we won't, we won't have those things. The highlighted assessments are the ones that have been suspended for this spring. So you get a good look at that. That's the majority of our assessments. So students this spring will not be, will not be taking those. And jury is still out on read to achieve. We haven't gotten anything final on that. At this time, summer camps are on hold until we get further guidance from the state.
Missy, do we know we're going to have a state report card for this school year?
We do not.
Yeah, still, the guidance, the jury is still out, I should say. There's a lot of things we're still waiting on guidance from the state on. And that's one of them. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, next slide, please, sir. So I wanted just to touch on this because it's just kind of a happy vibe to put in there and something to brag on. With career and technical education, students are moving towards more credentialing in those classes. And in fact, they're talking about eliminating some of the post-assessments, your traditional post-assessments, and moving more towards project-based learning assessments as well as credentials, which is more beneficial for our students. But basically, a credential that a student earns in class, it's going to put them ahead of other applicants as far as they're going to save the employee money and time on training because they'll have already received these credentials. They could possibly start at a higher salary rate depending on the credentials that they've earned. So there's some definite benefits for that. As of the fall, and I should have put 2019, but we had already credentialed 663 students, which is over half of where we were during the 1819 school year. So I feel certain had COVID-19 not come along, we would have surpassed that. And then I just real quickly wanted to point out that in 1819, Transylvania County Schools had 137.05% credentialing. And the reason we're over 100% is because in many classes, students can earn more than one credential. So we're doing, we're doing really well there. And even with COVID, students can come back in the summer if that's an option and/or next year to earn those credentials, to take those tests of sort, skills tests, and still earn those credentials. So even though they are not in school right now and can't earn them immediately, they'll still have opportunities to do that.
Missy?
To piggyback on what Missy's talking about, this is very important as we move toward meeting the goals of My Future NC. I know you're not hearing a lot about that right now due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but that is a very ambitious goal that has strong bipartisan support in our state. And that's still a goal for 10 years from now. So these credentials are important to that.
Missy?
Yes, ma'am.
Dallas, could you give an example of some of the credentials that our students are earning? Like what are some of the most?
So, yeah, for example, in digital media, our graphic design classes, students can earn an Adobe credential. And so I know that that has even been helpful. Luke is going to major in graphic design at Coastal. Luke is going to major in graphic design at Coastal. And so that's already being recognized there as well, and, and lets you not, I don't want to say, basically, you skip to a 200 level class because you're already certified here. So even outside of the workforce, there have been some benefits to having those credentials.
Okay, Missy, a two-part question. Did we add any new credentialing areas this fall? And do we anticipate adding any new areas next year?
So I am in the early stages of learning and reading about the credentialing. The, there are all new pathways and concentrations starting in the 2021 school year. And so yes, some of those credentialing opportunities will change. We will not have less than what we currently have, but they, but they will change somewhat depending on the route that the students go. It's more streamlined, straight across as opposed to a spider web of sorts. So I anticipate we'll have many of the same, if not all of the same, and, and that these numbers will go up because there's a heavier emphasis being put on the credentialing.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Missy, can you also include those that are certified at CNA?
Yes. And right now, we're working, thanks to Tammy Moment and Stephanie Ramsey for helping me stay updated. You know, their, their clinical portion of their classes got suspended and, and stopped. They've been working to stay up to date and trying to find different ways for students to continue with that path. And so they're, they're filming them while they're practicing their skills at home. And the state has lowered the number of hours that are going to be required for that. So they're both very hopeful that they can get those students certified. Okay, next slide. So this looks a little bit overwhelming, but I wanted to put our, what our seniors' graduation requirements are going to look like because those did change. As you know, Transylvania County, we have high expectations for our students, and they've always risen to those expectations. However, the state has said that we, no LEA can require more than the 22 credits to graduate. So I just wanted to put those, let you all see those if you haven't seen them already. As far as the four English, the four math, three science, and four social studies, that's no different. Neither is the health and PE. That's something we have always done. The difference comes in the concentration areas. So you can see two elective credits, and, and that could be an art credit and a Spanish one. It could be any combination there. And then four electives from any of the, the bullets listed there. They recommend a concentration area, but it's not required. So our students, our seniors are in really good shape. And then just down at the bottom, you know, just, just a note, this was more of the state's guidance, that for fall courses, students will receive those numerical grades. And I'm talking about our seniors, of course. And that semester, fall semester will count in their GPA. So essentially, their GPAs are, are seven semesters as opposed to the eight, because their spring courses will either be a pass or withdrawal.
And in a normal year, they would have up to, well, they, they had the option normally to earn up to 32 credits, and some students actually can earn more, but this year is going to be a little bit different.
We've asked teachers, and I think they're doing a really good job of, you know, essentially, many of our seniors have said, well, I have all my credits. March 13th, I was passed and I'm done. But our teachers are really doing a, a really good job of trying to keep those students engaged and helping them to understand the value in, yeah, you're going to get this pass, but here's why we need to keep going and moving forward. Okay. And then the next two slides, they're hard to see, but you all have copies of this. This is what was approved at, I think, our last board meeting for our underclassmen. And essentially, the next two slides, the differences being that we moved to the three-credit concentration, and then the wording with our social studies because the titles of those courses and the standards are changing. So really, nothing new there. But are there any questions?
I don't really have a question, but I'd like to piggyback on something you said earlier about the good job that our teachers and staff are doing in keeping students engaged and pushing lessons out either electronically, or I know at the elementary level, we're doing learning packets. But I would like to stress to our parents, grandparents, other caregivers, and our students, that it is their responsibility to take advantage of that, to continue to learn.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Yes, I'd also, you know, I teach a class at the college, and I had to put my class online with a week's notice this year, and I had no idea how hard it was going to be. I mean, my hat is off to every teacher in this system because it is hard. It is hard because what you do in class, you can't just throw it online because it doesn't work that way. So it's been very challenging for me, and it's been really challenging for a lot of students. And, you know, these are 19 and 20-year-olds who paid for the class. And, you know, half of them are swimming ahead, but there are two or three who you just can't, it's like, it's, you're dragging them through the swamp to get them to do anything. So people should not underestimate what it takes for a teacher to put stuff online and then engage students. I mean, I'm calling kids. I'm having meetings with kids. And these are college kids. These are not high school kids. So we need to have great appreciation towards our community for what our teachers are doing. It's hard.
And I think it's, it's pretty amazing how they have transitioned from, you know, this is not just a day or two of virtual work where you come back to school, and if you missed it, I'll catch you up. I mean, it's a whole mind shift, and they, you know, they've embraced it, and they're working harder probably than they ever have. So, yeah.
Very time consuming.
I've been telling people that we do not have this virtual plan to replace teachers, but we're in a shape where we were using it for what we needed for, make up two or three days at a time. And we're, I'm just grateful that we're so far ahead of the curve. Can you imagine if these people that have to start from nothing, do not have the equipment, Chromebooks, iPads, whatever it may be to run your program? And, and I told somebody, I said, we're still working on problems. But I said, at least our teachers have trained in, we do have a little advantage. And I said, a lot of people are calling us to see just what's going on and how to make it work.
Would add to, I agree with everything you said. I think our teachers are doing a great job. And I, I wouldn't just have to say to our, we have many parents of seniors that are on the list that I think we all feel for those seniors and how this has affected their senior year in high school, too. And so I would want to not, not mention that and just let, let them know that, that we do care, and our teachers care. The teachers are, are trying to engage them, but they do understand and care how hard this has been, particularly on that group of our students.
Um, yes, definitely. Some heartbreaking stories of, of things these seniors may miss out on. And so my hat's off to, to all stakeholders involved because it really has been a great, a great team that has come together. Moving on, this is just some guidance that we received, and we have put this out for parents and teachers and students in different grade levels. So they have all had access to this, and if they haven't, they can certainly let us know. But one of the big pushes is the critical factors for effective remote learning. And so the state has said, these are the most important things, that if you're going to continue to give students hard grades like you would if you were in a classroom, you should be meeting these critical factors. Now, that doesn't mean that it needs to be across the board. You might have one student who, who you can meet all these critical factors with, and by all means, you should be moving that student forward. Just today, we had a student who has access to Adobe at home, and so he can continue on with some things that maybe some other students can't, and that's okay. So those are the critical factors we want to think about as educators and as we're moving forward. We've talked a lot about the seniors, but for our elementary students, the real goal is to provide meaningful feedback to promote student growth and not be so focused on the grade. We do standard space grading anyway, K through four, but it's really about, let's just learn and grow and not worry about what the grade is. But the feedback from the teacher is essential. And then similarly, for sixth, grade six through 11th grade, it's, it's the feedback. We're promoting growth. We can continue to use grades, and we are continuing to use grades. It just looks a little different because the expectations can't be the same as if I'm sitting in a classroom with you. And Ms. Welborn, you already, you addressed that, dealing with college students, and I'm seeing it home with my two college students. It's just the pace is different, and the expectations have to be different. And so we're, we're moving for that forward, and know that feedback is the most important at this point. And then if we reopen May 15th, then we will get further guidance from the State Board of Education. Okay, next slide, unless there's questions? And I think that's it.
Must be it.
I would like to give a shout out to Tanya Tredway, was mentioned early on in the Good News Report, that we're going to try to do some kindergarten registration online. So she has been working with Vera Cabero and Kevin Smith to get that form up and running, just because we couldn't have the kindergarten readiness rally or our welcome weeks. So I just would like to thank them for getting that rolling and, and hopefully starting some registration soon.
Thank you, Missy. Are there other comments, questions for, for board members?
Thank you, Missy. That brings us up to FY21 budget. Mr. Barg will present budget update as much as we have for the fiscal year of 2020, 2021. We have draft documents, stress draft. I will pull those up, and I will turn it over to Mr. Barg.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
We, we have, uh, the same documents that you've seen many, many times before. And Dr. Maderas, if you would, pull up the fund two changes document. That's kind of the summary for the local current expense fund, and I'll, I'll go over that real quickly and answer questions on that. I'm not seeing that on my screen. Is everybody else seeing it?
I haven't pulled up on.
It's not on this screen.
No, it's not on the screen.
Okay, good deal. Okay.
Now it's clear. Now it's clear.
Good deal. As I said, these are documents that you've seen before, and this is kind of the summary document that we sort of start out with each time. And again, every year, that number one item is typically going to be the, the cost of living increase and the step increase particulars. We're estimating this year a 5% average increase for certified and a 3% for non-certified. Those numbers are unknown at this time. There's nothing in the biennial budget indicating pay raises for the second year of this budget. Legislature will have to vote on that if there are any, any changes. We anticipate that with this being an election year, that, that there'll be a little bit of movement on that compared to what we had last year. That amounts, not quite $207,000 in the local current expense budget. We do have some rates for retirement matching and for health insurance in the biennial budget. And you see these reflected in items number two and number three. Again, that is subject to change, however. Right now, it, it would move to 21.44% for retirement matching effective July 1. That's about $100,000. And $6,647 average over the fiscal year, that's about $30,000 for the health insurance increase. As I say, I still have question marks beside that because they, they are subject to change and very well could change. Well, I don't have item number four in there, but I'll, I'll make that change. At the last board meeting, I believe it was, the board requested certified supplement increase to 9%, 9.5% for veteran employees. And that would cost us about $104,000, including the benefits for that line item.
You, you have it in there. It's just the numbers are all.
Yeah, yeah. And then the increase for the payment to charter schools of about $134,600, that reflects both an estimate based on the amount of local current expense revenue we'll get and projected charter school enrollment. And then regardless of whether the supplement increase goes to 9% or not, we will have a supplement increase to cover the pay increase, and that would be about $84,000, including benefits. And finally, we've had a request from our athletic directors to include an increase in our athletic payments of about $23,700 to cover payments for SROs at ball games. We used to be able to cover that with comp time, and they'd take time off during the day, but that, that ceased several years ago, and they're being squeezed money-wise, having to pay about, well, almost $24,000 a year for security for the ball games and so forth. So we've, we've included that request in there. The total of those, those items is a little over $684,000, which would be about a 5.37% increase in our local current expense amount.
Just a reminder to the board, we don't know what will happen on pay increase. That, that was the recommended amount that I was giving to finance officers in the state. These are for locally paid positions, and so the state will pick up the costs on other positions, but for locally paid positions, we have to match that. And so if you look at the first three items in particular, we have no control over that. Whatever the state sets that rate to be is what we have to match. So we don't really have any control over those first three.
Doris, the increase in the supplement, the certified supplement increase to cover the pay increase, is that if, will that go up if our, does that include the increase in the supplement that we're looking at, or is that the way it is now with the 0.5?
That, that's separating it apart from item number five, that if,
Okay.
if we could not fund that nine, that increase to 9%, we would still need to find about $84,000 just to cover, assuming that the pay increases are what I have in number one.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And that's why I separated those two items out.
To explain, on number two and three, it says legislated in the biennial budget and effective July 1. and effective July 1. We just don't know the amount?
Well, no, we, we know what's legislated in the biennial budget, but over the past several years, the legislature has made changes to that every year. In the second year of the budget, when they come back into session, they, they can make any kind of changes they want to the biennial budget, including pay increases, matching benefit increases, funding changes. They can make any kind of changes they want to the biennial budget. And as I, as I mentioned, I, I guess it's probably been the last 10 years, there has been an increase every year, not just every two years, on both those items. So I would anticipate that money to, to increase a little bit more on top of that possible. With everything else going on, I have not heard much mentioned about what that possible rate might be that the legislature votes on. So this would be a, the figures you see there would be a base figures, probably a floor that those figures would be.
Well, I think we're in a very unique position anyway with, with all the things that are going on in the school system across the state. And we'll do the best for Kansas, the minimum measure, local budget requests, but there could be some inner changes that we have, you have no way to predict.
Exactly. And you know, as, if, if you recall this past year, you know, they did not fund any pay increases until we found out what exactly they were going to be. And they, you know, the legislature didn't really vote on any pay increases, but the teachers got a step increases, so we, so we went back to the commissioners at that point and asked for that funding, which they gave us. But it might be the same situation this year. I mean, before this mess started, that's what we were hearing, that there may not be another budget this year. So those numbers may change also.
And just for clarification, sorry, but all the athletic event security, that's not a new thing. It's just the fact that the schools have been absorbing that.
Exactly. The, the change had been made, and I don't know exactly when, but it'd been made several years ago, and they're, they're just having an increasingly difficult time absorbing those costs, so they requested that this year.
It's one of those things where we, we need the, the athletic security at an event because it only takes one person who's having a bad day to, to cause a problem. So we greatly appreciate that, and we, we have such a great relationship with our sheriff's department that we really appreciate with, you know, the SROs, when they're there, not only provide security, but you know, they're, they're a great presence there for our students who, who see them, you know, if they're in dare class or other things. So we do need the security there. The reality, though, is that when you have security at athletic events, some of our events make more money than other events. That's not, that's not to say that every one of them are not equally important, because they are. It's just the reality that sometimes certain events have higher attendance and a higher gate receipt potential. And so in general, by the time everything's all said and done for all of our events coverage, it's costing the schools approximately just a little bit south of $24,000 a year now to cover for the additional time on athletic event security.
Any other questions about this document? And obviously, those changes are folded into the line item, FY21 local current expense draft budget that was also included in your board packet.
I'll move to the next document.
Okay. The school capital needs document then? Capital projects document?
That one?
That's the one, thank you. So this list is reflective at this point of, of what we feel we need to replace. And let me, let me qualify this by saying I don't have all of the FY22, 23, and 24 fleshed out at this time. I concentrated on FY21, but at the next meeting, I'll have the rest of that filled out. Let me give you the example of what I'm talking about. If you'll go down to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line item, Brevard Elementary School, replace air handlers 3, 4, 5, and 6, there's $140,000 in the FY21 budget. The next meeting, you will see $140,000 in the FY22 budget. And I don't have the exact numbers in my head, I've got them on a document, but pretty much every school where you see air handler replacement, I'm doing it over a three or a four-year period. So those, those figures will be filled out at the next meeting. But these are all air handlers that are original to the schools built in 1974 that, that sorely need replacing, and we'd love to get them replaced before they actually break down like we're having to do at Brevard Middle School now with a couple. Trying to get ahead of things like this because we're supposed to be a maintenance department, not a, a repair department. So we're trying to maintain and replace some things before they break down, if we can. But you see several large items in there, including carpet for Brevard Elementary. I've split funded that one. See air handlers there at Brevard Elementary. I've got an estimate of bond expenditures at Brevard High and Rosman High School in there, and again, that's, that's subject to change too. One of the largest items you'll see besides the bond expenditures is at Pisgah Forest and replacing the piping there. We have a pretty critical problem there with the piping being corroded and pitted and in places starting to develop pinholes and so forth. So I got a, I didn't take bids, but I got budget figures on what it would cost to replace that, and it's a significant amount of money. If you look at the revenues that I have projected, there's a couple of different ways we could possibly fund that. I, I have, at this point, chosen to use lottery proceeds to fund that because I believe the board indicated they wanted to save that money for emergencies, and I feel like this is an emergency. And just a little bit later on, I'll, I'll give you an idea of our balances and what they look like, and I, I feel comfortable doing that if the board feels comfortable doing that. If you'd rather ask for the money from the county commissioners first, I'm fine with that also. But that, that's just one option for, for paying for those things. But that's about a three-month project, so we will have to do part of it in the summer 2020, and we'll have to do the rest of it in summer 2021. But I'd really like to get started on that in summer of 2020. And then we have things like a K-1 playground match at Pisgah Forest Elementary. They're proposing to match about $15,000, and they would like the board to, to fund about $80,000 of that playground match. We've got some media center carpet at Rosman Elementary that didn't get done in the last round, and other various and sundry items down through there that I'd be happy to answer questions about, if you'd like.
Norris, in regards to the Pisgah Forest Elementary Playground Match, with previous schools, hasn't it been a 50-50 match?
Yes, sir, it has. And, and I did explain that to, to Ms. Treadway, but told her that, you know, she, she said that they're having a very difficult time raising funds for it. And I told her that I would put that on the, on the request and see where it stuck.
And I, I couldn't hear part of it. What is the match that Pisgah Forest is proposing?
Uh, well, right now, they have about $15,000 raised, and they are saying, let me get to my figures here, they're saying that we would need to fund about 50, $55,000 of that. So they're, they're proposing about a third of the funding to our two-thirds match roughly, somewhere in there.
Now, this is just me speaking, but as much as, as a former principal at Pisgah Forest, and as much as I'd like to see them receive new equipment, I think we have to be consistent, or we ought to be consistent with what we've done with the other schools.
Absolutely. And I asked her about the possibility of phasing this playground in, you know, using their $15,000 or whatever now and, and matching it with the 15 now. But there's going to be some, some grading and some elevation changes for the new playground that are going to have to take place. So the old ones are going to have to come completely out before they can do anything. So they really have to have, really need all the funding in place before they can do anything.
I really agree with Ron, and in all fairness, I think we need to be consistent across schools with how, what we fund and how we fund it. I agree with you.
Okay. Well, what I can do is maybe push it back a year, do 47.5 from the board, 47.5 from Pisgah Forest, and if it doesn't happen next year, I can push it back another year.
Okay.
Any thoughts about the piping at Pisgah Forest and how you'd like me to proceed on that?
Well, obviously, we all know that it needs to be done. Those of us that looked at the ceiling two years ago, with Tanya at it, yeah, it's in, it's in pretty bad shape, and it's a shame for a school as, as, well, what is it now? Almost 30 years old or 25 years?
91, it's almost 30 years old, yeah.
Hey, almost 30 years old. Well, maybe.
It's not so young after all, is it?
Yeah, being a, kind of like the new gems at the two high schools, being our newest school built in 1991, 92, kind of a misnomer, I guess.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's time for things to start failing at Pisgah Forest, mechanical systems and, and things like that, because it's a 30-year-old school, and that's really more than lifespan.
Norris, can you pull up real quickly, what have we received in capital expenditures from the county each of the last five years?
Each of the last five years?
Haven't it been as high as 2.8 million a couple of years, or am I just, is that in my dream?
No, that, that was our budget for a couple of years, but some of that was lottery money, and I, I'll, I'll have to run a report, but I don't think we were over one point. Well, let me not, I'm, I'm not going to say anything until I.
Okay, well, maybe it was 1.8 million and.
1.8 million, and then we had some lottery money included, some fund balance appropriated included from projects that carried over, some things like that, yeah.
We've mentioned a lot of numbers here, but Norris, what was your original plan that you mentioned about going in and fixing those pipes again? Guess when will we start?
My, my original plan would be to do part of it this, this summer, not in, not in this, we'd start this summer, but we'd pay for it in the FY21 budget year and do about a month, month and a half's worth of work this summer, and then do the remainder of it next summer. So the whole budget would come out of the FY21 budget, even though we would start work in the FY20 budget year.
If, if I could pause this just a minute, if I could interrupt, and we have Chris Campbell, we just found out we're having some streaming problems, and so not everyone in the public's able to see the meeting right now.
Would you like for me to address that, Dr. McDarris?
Yes, please.
Okay. So board members, this is all part of this new world that we're trying to adjust to. We literally just found out in the last few minutes that folks without a TSNC domain access are not able to see the meeting, are not able to join the meeting. So at this point, my recommendation is pretty straightforward, that you've already taken the action you're going to take, that's already been done, and all you have left is updates. The, the open meetings law is all about intent, and I think it's crucial that you finish your discussions tonight, and the meeting will be immediately posted on the website for the public to see once it's over. And of course, the superintendent can post an apology saying that we didn't realize the issue until after all the votes had been taken, that we certainly are learning all these technologies, we will fix it for next time and immediately post the meeting. But tell folks that you finished the meeting because you felt like the updated information was crucial for the public to hear. So you wanted to finish the meeting for that reason, so that it could be immediately posted on the website. That's my advice. Again, these are truly unprecedented times. You could just stop the meeting right now, but again, since you've already taken whatever action you're going to take, I, you know, part of me thinks it would actually be more detrimental to the public for you to stop the meeting than for you to go ahead and post it with an apology the minute you're finished. Happy to answer any questions.
Good for taking the advice. They're very.
I believe, yes, I'm sorry. I believe it's recording, so we should be able to post it. I've got recording showing red, so it should be recording right now.
Yeah. Well, that's my understanding, and we should confirm that right now with Mr. Whitlock or someone to make sure, but my understanding is the minute the meeting's over, you will be able to post it on your website in its entirety. That's my understanding.
I believe, I believe Dr. Weaver's checking with Mr. Whitlock, and I'll also send him a text. And I'm so, I apologize, I did not know that it was not going out there.
We're new at this.
I didn't hear anything, but the red light's on, record.
Let's, let's confirm we're recording.
It doesn't give me, when I put the arrow over, it doesn't give me an option to press the button, so I think it's already recording, but I, the live button's red too.
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't ever seem to go perfectly tonight. And obviously, any media that usually comes to your meeting, I think we should reach out to those folks immediately and explain exactly what happened, you know, apologize and make sure that they know they can watch the meeting in its entirety. And you may even want Jeff to post a summary of the action taken by the board on your website too, in case folks are just curious about action.
So to recap, are we, are we waiting on Mr. Whitlock to proceed, or?
Waiting to find out if we're recording or not before we go.
Okay. The, this superintendent, is it, is it possible to stop the meeting completely for about five minutes and get them to, to then check it and then reconvene in, you know, about five minutes?
It is. We, we believe it's being recorded. We just are going to make sure that we can retrieve the recording properly.
So we will take a brief recess while we work on, um, county's, our meeting. And we, we will reconvene at about 7:50.
All right. And Jeff, we'll just click on the second same link? Or are we just going to leave this link open?
I would leave it open just to be on the safe side.
I would suggest everyone remove their microphone.
Yep. All right. Did you say 7:55, Tony?
They're still having some technical issues, so I'm going to just step out. And we're taking a, a five-minute break. So I'm just going to walk around the parking lot for a few minutes.